Okay. So we're going to go and get started. This is the Independent School District number 832, the Modest High Public School Board. We're having a special meeting tonight, Tuesday, December 22 at 6:00 PM. Due to the current emergency declaration and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the school board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D 021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Due to the health pandemic, the school board determined that it's not feasible for at least one board member, the superintendent, or the school district's legal counsel to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular meeting location due to the health pandemic. Persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location by watching the live stream. School board members are reminded to mute their microphones when they're not speaking, and if school board members wish to address, all of us, they need to raise your hand, notify me, and wait to be recognized in order to do so. All votes will be conducted via roll call vote, and each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is also being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. So with that, Julie, we'd like to start with the roll call of attendance, please.
Kevin Donovan.
Here.
Julie McGraw here. Judy Schwartz.
Here.
Stacy Stout.
Here.
Tony Visuni.
Here.
And Lucy Payne.
Here. I'd like to recognize Tony Visuni as our newest school board member. He was appointed to the board. He is officially a member of the board at this point, but we'll hold off on his official swearing or ceremonial swearing until January. He is an official member of the board, though, without that ceremony. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin.
Second.
Thank you, Stacy. Moved by Kevin, second by Stacy. Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call vote, please.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw, aye. Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Visuni.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
Aye. Motion carries. The only agenda item we have tonight is an action item, the approval of learning model change for K-5 at Wildwood Elementary School and O-H Anderson Elementary School. Barb?
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to start by sharing my screen. And I've got it. Okay, well, thank you for, once again, having another meeting so that we can discuss learning models. I know this has been quite a few for you, and you know, the constant meetings, and Judy, I know, you know, we had our send-off for Judy, and here she is back again. So thanks for coming. Thanks for coming, Judy. So we wanted to be able to communicate some thoughts and some plans that we have towards our elementary learning model. As you know, we received some information from the governor allowing elementaries to be in-person, and so we wanted to share with you what our plans are. Now typically, we don't make these learning model updates, I want to say, a month in advance or more, the way we are about to do right now, but we know people are also wanting to make plans and are eager to know, to go off into our break knowing what's to come. And so, so in part, that is why we are kind of breaking our, our normal ways of, of making these learning model changes in terms of timing. So to start, I am going to just quickly go through our current data, including our district dashboard, just because that's traditionally how we, we kick this off when we do a learning model update, but our, most of what we want to be able to talk about is our new state guidance and then the learning model change. And I do have our principal of O-HA Elementary, Susie Prather, here with us, and also Scott Brisky, principal of Wildwood Elementary, who, who will be joining me in this presentation. So, I'm sorry, I have to move us aside a little bit. So if you look at the, this is a, just a picture of the Washington County numbers. We'll share this with you now. In the new guidance for elementary, this, these are being used a little differently, but I do want to just show you, we are, I share this with you because there's some good news in this picture, and that is that our cases, our county case rates are trending downward. This is our district-wide dashboard, and this looks a little different right now because we are in distance learning district-wide. We rely on families and, families to really report what's going on at home, and we rely on our, our staff also reporting, although much of our staff is in-person because we are providing some in-person services for our students. These are not, these are as accurate as we have at this time. And so for, for the time being, our dashboard will be a district-wide dashboard as we move forward into more of our hybrid and in-person learning. That will change. Just as a reminder, this slide is here just to remind you of our learning, our learning model change process, which includes our indicators, reflecting on our indicators that reflect that model change, and analyzing those, also our impact analysis and meeting with our incident command team before bringing these to you. Okay, so here's what we really want to talk about, and that's our new state guidance. So why we have new state guidance? So based on Minnesota's evolving knowledge and understanding of COVID-19 transmission in elementary schools, in particular, our earliest learners that zero to, ages zero to 10, the safe learning plan has been updated to prioritize that in-person learning for our youngest learners. What we've been advised is that that spread between students that zero to 10, grade ages zero to 10, we don't see that as much. The impact that we see at the elementary is more amongst the adults in the building, and so that is a big part of our conversation that we're going to have today. So the guidance is telling us that we may use hybrid or in-person learning models with new health and safety parameters and our local COVID-19 data, so our building level data, starting on January 19th. I want people who are watching from home to know there was no new information shared about secondary schools, and so secondary, we are told, we need to continue to follow the safe learning plan that was laid out for us earlier in the school year. So as an overview, the new state guidance. So the first part has to do with a rolling start, and at, at the state level, they specified three grade bands at a time. The idea, really, the intent of it is to phase, it's a phased-in approach to slowly bring back students. So instead of going all from distance learning immediately, completely into in-person learning K-5, the state is saying they would like their, their, requiring that phased-in approach to slowly bring back students to really understand the impact of fully being in-person. So that's one part of this. We also needed to meet with our incident command team, which we did today. A big part of the new state guidance is in order to bring back in-person, students in person, we will not need to maintain six feet of social distancing between students, but they are, they're reducing that to three feet of social distancing between students. The six feet of distancing needs to still exist between staff and students, and between staff and staff. So there are some implications for that with quarantining, so we're going to talk about that a little bit. But the big, so the big difference in the way it would work to bring all students back in would be to reduce the distance between students, maintain the distance between staff and students. When educators cannot be six feet from students, say for small group or individual instruction, they're recommending this, a clear barrier between the adult and student, and we have quite a bit of that already in existence in our, in our buildings when our special educations or our small group instruction happens. We have quite a bit of that. I believe there are some, some classrooms we still need to equip in order for that, that to be met. A big difference will, the staff will now be wearing both a face mask and a face shield when interacting with students. So this, this will be a change. We've had, had just the face mask up until this point, so it will be required to have both in this new model. Staff will receive free saliva tests every other week. We have been doing that as a district. That has just been, we had a part, we've had a partnership with HCMC, and we started doing that so that we could maintain, we've been providing in, in-person learning for some students during this distance learning time, and in, in part, one way we felt comfortable doing that with our staff was so that it was because we were providing that saliva testing for our staff. So we already have a head start on that and some, some protocols in place for that to be able to continue. Other parts of the new state guidance, the specialists need to teach in the classrooms or outside, and that we have covered. These last ones, we already had taken care of in our hybrid model before we even got this new guidance. Physical, physical education can be held indoors, but face coverings must be worn at all times. All meals need to be eaten in the classrooms or outside. That is part of what we do, and schools must use planning days in order to prepare for the transition. So that is also required, and so we have some proposals for that as well. At this point, I would like, I'm going to stop talking for a moment and allow Susie and, Susie Prather and Scott Brisky to take over and talk about the planning and the considerations that have gone into place with this new state guidance.
Awesome. Thanks, Barb. So I want to start by saying that knowing that we have the opportunity to bring back students gives Susie and I just great joy and anticipation because we know that our teachers, they work their magic when students are in front of them. As leaders, Susie and I wanted to make sure that our school and our staff are equipped to have all of our students in our classrooms. So we started to look at the health and safety protocols, and we started asking ourselves some questions. Do we have the capacity to sustain full in-person learning? We have full confidence in the health and safety protocols during the hybrid model, but the six feet, as Barb mentioned, will be removed during that full in-person, which may mean larger quarantines for our staff and students. So we looked back at the data of staff quarantines during the months of August through now at Wildwood, and what we saw was in August, we had seven total staff members out in August and September. In October, we had eight total staff members out. In November, we had 12, and in December, we had nine. Now, some of those staff members were out for 14 days. Some were only out for a few, but it really became evidence that as the numbers rose in the community, we really started to feel that in our capacity to fill classrooms with teachers. So part of our recommendation is that we would really like to monitor the data for the ability to staff classrooms before an in-person switch. Otherwise, that gap between hybrid, where we feel pretty comfortable, and going full in-person, it's really, it's unknown. And I'm just, I'm gonna be honest, I'm concerned that we won't have staffing for students if we have large number of quarantines. Quarantines are a burden on students, they're a burden on staff, and they're a burden on parents, and I just want to make sure that the mitigation strategies that we're putting in place with the new guidelines produces positive results for our students and staff so that we can bring them back to full in-person with confidence.
Thank you, Scott. And as Scott had spoken, as leaders, we want to ensure that we have that health and safety for our students, but also that high-quality teaching and learning that's happening for our students. And you all know that our hybrid model is very, a very strong model with four days of in-person learning and one day of at-home learning. And one of the things that we have seen is that five days of continuous learning is a really strong model in that hybrid model, and other districts weren't able to do that with some of that two-day A-B kind of foundation for their hybrid. So really, what our, our goal here in our recommendation is really to work on what is working, our hybrid model that's working, and then how do we ensure, as Scott had said, that we have high-quality teachers in front of our kids. So we want to ensure that we have the capacity to have our high-quality teachers in Modest High in front of our kids and not guest teachers, and really be prepared to really deliver that 100% in-person model the way that we want to do that.
So in order to do that, our teachers have done an incredible job of being flexible with multiple different learning models that they've switched throughout the years, or year here. We want to make sure that they are set up for success, and that takes time. So our teachers plan as teams. They create lessons that are engaging for students depending on what learning model we are in, and we just want to make sure that we're giving them time for that important planning.
And with the teachers, we want to also make sure that families and students are ready for that transition. So part of our planning, you'll see those are some considerations, is to really give families time to prepare for the transitions that we're recommending.
So our recommendation would be on January 19th, we implement the hybrid learning model for K-5 students for Wildwood and O-H. All elementary students would be in-person for those four days, and that home learning day would be once, one day a week, just like it was before we went to distance learning. Students will retain their original hybrid schedule, their same home learning day that they had before we, before we pivoted, and families who made a learning model change for the second semester will begin their new model on that day as well.
And what we're looking at is in February, once we have, have all of that data, to see that our mitigation strategies are working. On February 16th, implement the 100% in-person model for K-5 students, Monday through Friday, kids would be in-person learning.
So we've seen this before. Our hybrid model will be the same as it was before we switched over to distance learning. Our school day hours will be the same, 7:55 to 1:25. Our weekly schedule will be, again, five days of continuous learning. All elementary students will be in-person for four days, and then they'll have one distance learning day. This would reduce class sizes, of course, approximately 17 to 18, and then we have about four to five students at home each day on that distance learning day. Our specialists would be the same, and our instructional model would be the same, and we would still continue to have adventure club MAC and tier-one programming would continue.
As Scott and I shared in the beginning, one of our goals as administrators was to really make these models so we could pivot between models in a seamless way. So when we're looking at 100% of our students in-person learning, what we would see is we would see the same school day. So at O-H Anderson, it is 7:45 to 1:15, and at Wildwood, it'd be 7:55 to 1:25. So there'd be no change in the school day. Our schedule will look the same, too, except students would be in school in-person five days a week, so that master schedule would look the same. We'd be following those same health and safety protocols as staying in our cohorts for lunch and recess, kind of having that entry and exit points from all areas of the school, not having large gatherings, the masks, that social distancing, as Barb had explained, that would be shortened from that six feet, and then, of course, those strong hygiene practices and the cleaning guidelines and protocols we've set forth. In the 100% in-person learning, our childcare, we would still have MAC and tier-one programming taking place in that model as well.
So as far as the transition, on January 15th, that would be an elementary staff planning day where our teachers would take the opportunity to plan for the switch, and we would not have school on that day. And then January 18th is Dr. Martin Luther King Day, so that's no school on that day, and then we would implement a hybrid learning model on January 19th for all kindergarten through fifth-grade students.
And ongoing through this process, we'd be reviewing our internal data that we have as far as capacity with staffing, as far as quarantines, as far as positive cases with students and staff, and then our plan would be, is for the 100%, 100% in-person learning transition would be on February 10th and 11th. It would be our planning days for that. On February 12th is already a conference day, February 15th is president's day, and that implementation of 100% in-person would start then on February 16th.
And so maybe it will, well, here, I can, I will, I will finish up with the secondary, and then we'll probably want to talk more about elementary, because at this point, we do not have new information about our secondary, and I mentioned this at the beginning, but we will, I did start having the conversation with our regional support team, and, and truthfully, we started this conversation with the regional support team prior to going to distance learning to get advice about how we can come back safely. So we have more work to do with, with the regional support team and how it is we can come back. One of the questions today during the incident command team was, is it the case that we have to wait until the elementary is completely in-person before we can move secondary? And no, that's not the case. We're going to be looking at our secondary students and seeing what we can do, and, and, and it very well may be, and again, this is a long time, I mean, it's a month ahead of time, so I don't, I don't know what's going to happen a month from now, but the idea would be that we would bring back our secondary as soon as, as soon as it's safe to do so, and so that, we would hope, we are hopeful, could be before too long, and so I don't want to be specific about that because if I throw out a date, then, then, you know, you know, I don't know what's going to be happening a month from now. So I do want you to know that on January 7th, we have our next school board meeting, and we will be sure to give you as much information as we have at that time as well, and then we'll continue to inform our school community in general about what we know and, and how soon we can look at learning model changes in that regard as well. So with that, I'll stop sharing my screen so we can see everyone at once, and then I would, we, Scott, Susie and I are all ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Barb. Thank you, Scott and Susie, for being with us tonight and answering questions. So are there questions from board members? Go ahead, Julie.
Curious. Not as much about this plan, but how many of our five planning days have we gone through? Is this three or? Do we have enough left?
Yes, this would, we would have enough to get to this point, and, and the ones that, that we are talking about using, the two that we are using prior to in-person are required. We have to use two. That's part of the, the guidance because we haven't been in-person fully yet, so we do have to use two to pivot there.
Okay.
The one we do need in order to transition for our staff, so.
Correct. So.
And that brings us to five. It brings, it brings us to five. At that point, we will have used five for elementary.
Oh, okay.
For secondary, but for elementary.
Okay. All right.
So a bit of point of clarification there, Barb. In our calendar, do we still have the two snow days built in, which we'll probably won't use because we have distance learning capabilities now, and so we still have some flexibility in our calendar in terms of instructional days?
We have flexible, so those five days count as instructional days for the state, and so we have, we do have flexibility, yes. Whether we have snow days or not built in, I mean, we have that flexibility because those five days are considered instructional for this year.
Thank you. Stacy, you had your hand up as well.
Yes. First, I wanted to say to Scott and Susie, great job on how you've handled hybrid so far this year, and, and obviously, distance learning, but I, I just really want to commend you on how you've done four days a week. I know a lot of districts have managed to do two in elementary, and, and the fact that our district has four days a week, I think, is really terrific. So I wanted to highlight that because I think that has just been a great achievement, and it's so important for those learners. I wanted to ask a question, and this is probably really more for Barb. So you said, when we return to in-person, I, I think it's correct, people can still choose distance learning at that point, right?
That's correct.
So I just wanted to make sure that was on the record, and then, do we know, because there's been the questionnaire that went out, do we know as of right now, what percentage of students are choosing not to come back if, if it's January 19th, and how will that affect, once we do go in-person, well, I'm guessing it still won't be a full classroom? Is that correct?
I, I think, well, I'll let Scott and Susie speak to that. So in a, one second, I will say that one of the things that we did at the beginning of the year is we started with what we considered a full classroom as a smaller than what an average classroom would be, and we did that so that when we, we could do that 80% model and still meet the 50% classroom capacity model. So in order for our four-day-a-week model to work, we had to start with smaller class sizes anyway. So that is the case regardless, and I may have just answered it, but Scott and Susie, do you have anything else to add in terms of the people who have come back and the size of the classes?
So I just did the calculation. Stacy, thank you, you know, and it's, we're at about 86% of our kids that are in the hybrid in-person, and then the other about 15%, 14% is distance learning. So actually, in the model change, we did have more people move from the distance learning to the in-person, which could be in-person or hybrid learning.
Yep, and that was, that was the same story for us. So in kindergarten, we have 89% that would be attending in-person or hybrid, and that's the same for first grade, and then second grade is actually 93% of the students would be attending after, after they made the switch, so.
Other questions or comments? Kevin, go ahead.
So the plan sounds very logical, and if I'm understanding it correctly, our biggest, really, our limiting factor is staff. So if, if the staff have to be quarantined, all of a sudden, we have a problem of delivering that excellent Modest High education because we simply don't have the, the people there. So in that sense, then this does seem to make some sense to see where we're at in the January, and then how that will hold up going into February. Is that, am I right in that very brief overview?
That's accurate, yep.
Go ahead, Tony.
Well, I just wanted to thank the principals for putting together a wonderful presentation for us this evening. Just to kind of add an overview to this, it seems that the biggest difference between a hybrid model and the in-person model is that six feet versus the three feet of distancing, and I think a question that might come up in the community, and I kind of heard overtures of it, but I just wanted to reiterate from you guys, the, what are the benefits of doing that transition from, you know, distance to hybrid to in-person versus just jumping fully into in-person as you recommended?
I would say, you know, one of the pieces that we really considered is we want to look at the actual data, and I think either Scott or Barb had stated that our data that we shared on the dashboard is what we have at this point, but we want to have the actual numbers of staff and students that are quarantined, that are positive to COVID, to see what our capacity is, and we really want to have those numbers to really monitor if we are able, you know, to be successful with our high-quality teachers in person. So it really is looking at that data and making sure that we have the capacity to provide that high-quality education for our students.
So the incident command team, too, it was mentioned that if we didn't have enough staff, so if we were to jump straight into face-to-face learning, and we didn't have the staff, we'd have to potentially quarantine entire buildings and quarantine entire schools, which would throw our community, our parents, for a loop, and so this thoughtful planning process is allowing us to avoid, as best we can, that potential hiccup in all of our schedules. Is that a fair assessment of what was said of the incident command team?
It was, and I, I would take one step back, though, and say, you know, we do think that we're, it's possible we're going to have more classroom quarantines. I wouldn't go straight to school quarantines as much as I'd start with. We, with three-foot distancing, it is more likely we will have full-class quarantines. And so that is, you know, that is one of our trade-offs. And then the other part is what you've talked about with staffing. If we simply don't have the staff to run, and this happened to other, other districts, other buildings, some districts that would have just one elementary is completely shut down. We've seen that happen. We haven't had that, and we don't want to have that, and if we can prevent it, that is, that's what we're hoping for here.
Thank you. Stacy, did you have another question?
I just wanted to confirm. I just wanted to confirm, so all the things that have been laid out, which Barb went through, we, we will have all of those things in place, correct? All the face shields and all of those things. So if that's the case, it's, it sounds like the governor's office has laid out that then from what they have learned, that is a safe environment. And that's the data that they are working off of. Is that correct?
Yes, that that makes, they're, so how do we say this? So they're saying that in order to be back in-person, if we do these, if we do these extra things with the face shield, face mask combination, ensuring the distancing, the, the physical distancing of staff from students, that, that should, well, is, is, it, it would have that extra layer of mitigation that could make us feel or make it safe enough to come back in-person. How's that? Yeah.
So a follow-up to Stacy's question though, that's information and data they've gathered from the fall semester. Those are, aren't things that we knew beforehand. And so this change in guidance is based upon experience in the K-12 schools in the state of Minnesota where before, we didn't have that information. So this is new information to not only us as guidance, but to the governor and, I mean, the whole system, we're, we're still learning about COVID. Is that right?
That's true, and they, they based it in the call on Monday with MDE and MDH. They explained that, that, that extra letter, layer of mitigation, that extra face shield was something that they saw in, actually, they talked about meatpacking plants where they had a number of really significant outbreaks. And that when they put those two strategies together, that that significantly reduced the spread. And so that's actually the example they gave.
Stacy, go ahead.
I just wanted to just add to that, that I, I appreciate that that's, we are, we do have new information coming out, and that's, I, I think it's great that we are, are following that. I want to point out though, and push back a little, none of us has a crystal ball. So hopefully, we won't see any of the quarantines. And I just wanted to point that out because I do think the governor has laid out this data very well. And we have a green light now, and so I really hope that we can move forward into in-person and, and following that guidance, I think we should feel confident that we've put every measure in place for safety that is, that we, that is known to us. And so I think that's really important that we acknowledge that. And I, I really just want to advocate that as long as we're able to do all of those things, then it's best for our students to be back with their teachers. Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate that too. I think another perspective to, to kind of build on what you're talking about Stacy is that by doing this with the hybrid and showing success and, I don't know, care and caution, it also sets us up for a better start for our secondary. Because our secondary, we also want to get them back in-person. And we know that when we do that, we are likely going to be using different new guidance from the state compared to what we started with. So I'm anticipating that there will be some changes to that as well. And so the degree to which we can show that we can confidently move forward to a more, to a less restrictive model, I think, I think that helps us district-wide as well. So, thanks.
Other questions? So Barb and Scott and Suzie and all the other people who've worked behind the scenes, this is a huge amount of work behind the scenes. Now, I make sense of the guidance, but then to see how that fits into our context has been a lot of work in a very short amount of time in order to get information out to our families. I feel very good about the way we're being respectful to our families, giving them a heads up of what we plan to do in terms of thinking about childcare and other arrangements they may need to make. But we still need to think in terms of, we're a month out from some of these ideas, and these are still things that could change. But we're, can do the best we possibly can. It's been our goal from the beginning to have as many students as we can face-to-face in a safe environment. And so we hope all this works out, but there's still no guarantees that a month from now, we'll be in the same situation. I encourage our community and our family members to stay safe and not gather in order to keep our community numbers down and to continue allow, allowing us to move forward with these plans. Because that makes a huge difference if we have those lower community numbers. So I think that's really important. So I'm going to call one last time for any other questions before I look for a motion on the learning plan. Hey, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
So you're moving the approval of the proposed learning plan that has been presented tonight?
Yes, for Wildwood and OH Anderson. Yep.
Thank you. Moved by Julie, second by Kevin. Last call for discussion. All right, Julie, roll call vote please.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw.
Aye.
Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Vesuni.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
The chair's aye, motion carries. Thank you so much again for the presentation, all the thoughtful work that went into this tonight. This is the only agenda item we had tonight, is a special meeting, we can't add to the agenda in any sort of way, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Thank you.
And.
Moved by Tony, second by Stacy. Roll call vote Julie.
Kevin Donovan.
Aye.
Julie McGraw.
Aye.
Judy Schwartz.
Aye.
Stacy Stout.
Aye.
Tony Vesuni.
Aye.
And Lucy Payne.
The chair's aye, motion carries. Thank you so much for coming tonight, everyone. Thank you, Judy, again for your service. And we'll say we're on a January 7th.
Thank you.
Good night.
Bye.